For people on the corners.
Yeah.
I have my.
That's hot, so just.
Oh, geez.
It's just starting. Okay. We're just.
It's been two. We're streaming live, too.
Oh, can you guys hear?
You're live.
We're live.
You're live.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna open the press conference. We'd like everyone, you know, I really, um, thank you, everyone, for being here today. And I wanted to start off by saying that our Board of Elections, it was a very difficult night last night. All of them that were there, basically times between 6:00 PM and almost midnight because the election was on, it was off, it was on, it was off. And every time the change was made, we had dozens of employees down to Board of Elections last night calling people to, that the election was on, the election was canceled. And that went on almost, you know, till 1:00 AM. So I thank Joyce Calpesta, Tom McCabe, and all the employees there that went through all those efforts. And, you know, all the, the voting places were, were, the booths were in place, everything was ready. So basically, what we've done is, the whole state of Ohio is gonna pay for two primary elections. You know, 'cause all the expenditures are, the lion's share of the expenditures were made for yesterday, and they'll be made again for June 2nd. So, a difficult time for all, and a lot of people worked very hard to make sure that we were ready to vote, and then worked very hard to make sure that everyone knew the vote was canceled. So, we thank the Board of Elections for all their hard work. We wanted to get together today just to discuss some of the changes that are gonna be made here for the county offices, subsequent to the Governor Dewine's executive order to close the bars and restaurants, as well as the recommendations made by the White House and the CDC and the local public health officials. The Board of Mahoney County Commissioners are issuing a public notice of the temporary changes to the public access to county government services. These temporary changes are being made in an attempt to address the current COVID-19 public health crisis wherein an aggressive response is necessary to control the spread of the virus. Closures and limitations in public access to county services are based on what is being considered essential services. The care and the safety of the public and our employees is of, of the utmost concern to the Board, as well as the rights of all individuals subject to county authority. The following is the most updated information regarding access to county offices and related services. Updates to this, this information may be necessary and may change daily as situations develop and new information is available. While most of our offices will remain open to the public for now, we ask that in the best interest of the community, only essential business with the county be conducted in person. And when necessary, physical proximity and personal hygiene recommendations be followed. So we're going to get into a little bit of what offices and what changes will be made, and how the accessibility will be for business in the county. Before we get into that with Dennis, Anthony, would you like to say anything?
Sure. Ladies and gentlemen, the way of life that we were accustomed to has drastically changed, and it's making us act and behave different than what we were totally accustomed to due to COVID-19. As a Board of Commissioners, we are closely monitoring the coronavirus pandemic and staying aware of potential risks posed by its spread. We're closely monitoring alerts from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, and we are also seeking advice from medical experts that are working to keep employees safe and informed. We are providing updates through traditional media outlets and social media channels. As you know, Mahoney County does provide critical services to our community, and it's our responsibility to provide safety and reliability all day and every day. We need to ensure that we have a workforce that is able and ready to do the work necessary to provide vital and crucial services to our community. We have an equally important responsibility at this time to help prevent the spread of the coronavirus by educating our employees and exercising plans that limit exposure, and that's what we're trying to do today, as you see in this room. We want to ensure that we are prepared in case we are required to respond to a widespread outbreak, and that we take the necessary precautions. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to do everything that we can as a Board of Commissioners to try to provide the continuity of services that our community so desperately needs. I'm very proud of the team that we have assembled that are helping us do that, all of our professionals, our employees, all the medical professionals who we work with daily until we can get a grip on this pandemic. So with that, I will turn it over to Carol.
Well, thank you very much for being here. I wanna reiterate what my colleagues have said. I also wanna thank Kathy Jones and Dennis O'Hara for the hard work, and Audrey Tillis and the Prosecutor's Office for actually putting all of this legal, the legal team together to keep us on target and make things legal for not only Mahoney County employees as well as the residents of Mahoney County. We have not really experienced anything to this magnitude for many, many years, and the precautions through the Governor's Office all the way down to county government have to look at this as if this is something that is catastrophic at this point. Going forward, if everyone does exactly what is told to them by our health providers as well as our team, we may be out of this in a couple months, but we don't know that right now. The precautions are being taken not only by Mahoney County as well as all of the outside entities, and you all know that. If you are on a staff or in a department that has staggered people or staggered shifts, I would say to you that when you do get home, the basics of what you do when you get home should be what's happening. If you are off, then when you go home, you should only go off for necessities. And if you do feel like you are sick, I mean, I know this is allergy season, we have it, I have it, but if you are sick, seek your medical help through your physicians, but pay attention to what Mahoney County directives are, and with God's will, we will all stay safe. Just be safe, shop, get your groceries, enjoy your families at home. This is your time. Thank you.
All right. With that said, we'll turn it over to Dennis O'Hara, and he's going to fill us in on, on some of the specifics of the different departments in the county, and take it from there. Thanks, Dennis.
Good. Okay. So, I'm Dennis O'Hara. I'm the Emergency Management Director for Mahoney County. And what I wanna go over briefly before I get into the county offices is just an update with Mahoney County. We currently do not have any cases in the county. There are 50 confirmed cases in the state of Ohio, and they are in a total of 12 counties right now. All this information is being continuously updated through the Ohio Department of Health's website, which is coronavirus.ohio.gov. All of the latest guidance from the Ohio Department of Health is on that website, so I encourage all residents to utilize that website, and there is information for every type of question that could be out there. So with that, the recommendations are to encourage social distancing as much as possible. So to remain in any setting as much as possible, limit your exposure by distancing yourself by up to six feet away from other individuals. We have distance, the setup of this room to space out the chairs in this room. So, moving forward with county offices, I'm not gonna hit on every county office, but I will hit on a number of them that have specific changes. But all of this information is going to be available on the county website, which is And I also encourage any, any citizen that has business to be conducted with the county, please call ahead to the, the respective department or agency to receive the, the information, the latest information, if they have public counters open, if their lobbies are open, what their alternative options may be to conduct business. So with that, the Commissioners' public hearings, they're, the Commissioners have to, to hold weekly meetings, and the, the hearings are gonna change slightly with the seating here. We're also going to make available a conference bridge for departments and the general public to be able to listen to the calls, but not physically be here. All this information will be available on our website. The Treasurer's Office has closed to public access, but they have not closed public capabilities. What they're doing is they have posted a number on the, the door to the Treasurer's Office, and if a, a customer or resident comes in and needs to work with the Treasurer's Office to do a pay-in, they're gonna be encouraged to call the phone number. Somebody from the Treasurer's Office will come out, get the document, get the pay-in, take it back in, do the pay-in, and bring it back out, so that this way they can limit exposure in the public lobby of the Treasurer's Office. The Prosecutor's Office, the criminal and civil offices are closed to the public. Again, this is gonna be the same for every county agency. We're, we're pushing for social distancing where possible and to exercise precautions. So call in and check the website. The Juvenile Justice Center, the lobby has been closed to the public with the exceptions of proceedings deemed necessary by the court. Again, check their website. The Mahoney County Justice Center, Sheriff Green has closed that down. He even closed it down last week, so that the lobby of the Justice Center is closed to the public until further notice. Check the Sheriff's website for that information. The Highway Engineers' Office has closed to the public, however, checks can be accepted through the breezeway. The Highway Engineers' Office does have a, a small breezeway where they have a divider, where documents can be fed through the divider that way, but they are not allowing the public in at this time. The Dog Wardens' Office has changed up operations, and they have, late hours on Wednesday and Saturday are suspended, suspended until further notice, but they are, at this time, the lobby's open for licensing and fees payments, 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. But again, limit your exposure and proximity to other people. The Board of Developmental Disabilities, the Leonard Kurt School has been closed for three weeks, and they're following all the schools in the state that have been closed for that time period. However, the Community Services Offices, as well as the Center at Jav, Port, remain open for employees and clients, but please call the, the DD Board Office if you have any questions for them. And then, lastly, my office, the Emergency Management Agency, I'm, I'm very active in this, so if there's any questions, please contact my office where I can assist. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, to Bob Bush, who's the Director, Director of Job and Family Services, to give an update on what they are doing, and then after, we're gonna turn it over to Bert Seen to discuss what operations are occurring at his facility.
Thanks, Dennis.
Morning. My name is Bob Bush. I'm the Director of the Mahoney County Department of Job and Family Services. First of all, I wanna thank the Commissioners for their direction and their support of, of what activities we're doing up at JFS to try to get through this, this issue. I just left a meeting with my administrative staff. We had meetings yesterday, also Friday, and there's some of the things we wanna report to the, to the public. At JFS, at the, the location on Oak Hill, there would be no public access to the JFS or the Child Support Lobby areas effective Wednesday, March 18th, 2020. Drop-off boxes will be provided in the external area for those who have to drop off applications for benefits and/or information that's gonna be scanned in their file. So the, the public will have an opportunity to drop off information that we will, we're gonna monitor that two or three times every hour to get those documents inside. Community displaced workers or those that have decreased in their income can call 1-844-640-6466 to apply for Medicaid, food assistance, and cash benefits. Those that may be impacted by this, you do not have to wait for an unemployment determination in order to apply for benefits. Bert Seen to talk about unemployment. As far as cash assistance, Medicaid, and food assistance, you can call that number. All that application process can be handled by phone. For those, uh, childcare applications can be done online at mahonecountyohio.gov. An executive order increased the amount of children that can be handled by in-home childcare providers, so that should be a little bit of help to the, to those that are, that are working or not working, their children are home. I believe the state increased that from six to seven children can be in those houses, so that's been a change that's in effect. Non-emergent transportation, which is our net program, and we, I believe, provide about 1,500 trips a day. Medicaid-approved clients may call 330-740-2600, extension 8797, to apply for medical transportation. That transportation is, uh, we would also go to Pittsburgh and to Cleveland Clinic. That's being curtailed. From now on, we will only transport clients within Mahoney, Columbiana, Trumbull, and Portage County, and Summit County. We will no longer be transporting clients to the hospitals in Pittsburgh or to Cleveland The SNAP 10 of work requirements have not been eased by the federal government or the state of Ohio. Some of our programs require a 30-hour work, uh, 30-hour-a-week work requirement in order to receive that benefit. That has not been waived by the state of Ohio or the federal government, so those work benefits are still in place. However, some employee, employers are turning away those folks in the program. They will not be penalized if indeed their work site would not permit them to work. So, again, the work requirement is still in place, but our clients will not be penalized if the employer doesn't want them into the work site. The 10 of summer program was just announced last week. Mahoney County was slated to get about $250,000 for our summer program. That's being canceled until further notice. The Child Support Lobby again will be closed effective Wednesday, March 18th. Genetic testing to determine paternity has been canceled until further notice. Administrative Child Support hearings will be conducted by telephone where possible. If we can't get a phone connection, that hearing will be curtailed till further notice. Again, there would be no punishment or, or sanctions because of inability to have your A JFS CSCA Facebook page will be operational in the next couple of days. That will provide real-time information to Mahoney County residents. Also, we anticipate a spike in Medicaid applications because of the virus and some people needing to get medical attention. And, again, that can be provided, done all through the telephone process. You don't have to come in for interviews on that. Additionally, the folks that may be impacted, again, the small businesses, restaurants, hairdressers, bars, where people are, are getting laid off or not receiving their, their, their wages, you can apply for Medicaid, cash, and/or food stamps all by telephone. You do not have to come in. Far as internal staffing, at the request in the direction of the Mahoney County Commissioners, JFS will be going on a reduced staff, staffing level at the agency. We're gonna have, half of our workers work two to three days a week, and the other half work from home, and then we're gonna flip it around. It is gonna increase our wait time and some of our attention time to cases, but again, there will be no sanctions as far as reapplying. That's gonna happen automatically or through the computer system in Columbus. And your Medicaid reapplications will also happen. Your long-term care, those citizens that have relatives in nursing homes, that's gonna continue because you obviously do not have access to that relative in the nursing homes. Right now, we service about 84,000 clients in Mahoney County on Medicaid, and about 53,000 clients a month on food assistance. That's gonna continue, and there would be no sanctions, and we look forward really to serving the rest of our citizens, those that may come in and apply. Again, you can do all of this on phone, by phone, and we will be producing a Facebook site to give real-time information. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Bush, can we talk about the child support payments? How they get paid?
Oh, okay. Our child support payments, we, uh, we're one of the few counties that, as a courtesy to the paying public, we took, we take payments through our window in our lobby area in child support. That's being curtailed. You can pay by debit card, credit card, or through the Child Support Central Payment Office in Columbus, Ohio. And that number is, uh, let me see, payment, Columbus, Ohio, here you go. CSPC, P.O. Box 182372, Columbus, Ohio, zip 43218, or ohioebellchildsupport.com, or you can call the CSPC at 1-888-965-2676. 1-888-965-2676, in order to make your payment by credit card or debit card. Thank you. Yes?
For the drop-offs of the applications and some of that is like really personal information, is there gonna be someone who's, who's looking after that or for HIPAA violations? Will there be someone stationed there to protect that information?
Well, we have a, it's a double-door entry system. We will have someone behind that second door that's gonna monitor that drop-off box. And like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, we monitor that closely and empty it hourly or half-hourly, whatever we do. We won't, we won't have that information just sitting out there. Yes, ma'am.
And will people be able to go online to Columbus, or should they call your office since you have limited staff for those benefits?
Well, the way that new system is, if you call Columbus, and when you go to the menu, it's gonna refer you to Mahoney County. And, uh, we may change our phone messaging because obviously if we go to a half-staff, it, it is gonna increase our wait time. But all of that, I just wanna reinforce, all of that can be accomplished, though, through the phones. Any other questions?
Bob, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have hard copies? So we could give the media a copy of all of that phone numbers, if you do?
I have it.
Okay. Then you could pass that out, so you could have all that information and put that on your.
Right. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Bob. Good afternoon, or good, good morning, I guess it's still morning. Uh, I'm Bert Seen. I'm the Director of the Workforce Development Board for Mahoney and Columbiana Counties, also overseeing workforce development, also overseeing the Mahoney and Columbiana Training Association. So first of all, I'd like to say that, thank you Commissioners for the support you've given us in this trying time. Obviously, these times are, require some unique changes, and we have been working diligently to not only balance the health risk to the public, to our staff, but also provide the needed services to, to the county. We, we have closed as of today to the public at our Ohio Means Jobs One-Stop Centers and our MCTA offices. One of the major reasons we did that with the Commissioners' information is, we have 30 public computers just at our Mahoney County site, and we also do recruitments and a lot of activities. We wouldn't be able to handle not only the social distancing, but we wouldn't be able to handle the minimum of 10, 50, whatever you look at, as far as how we would handle the, the public. And obviously, our primary concern is to protect the public, the health of the public and our staff as we move forward. I'll give, I'm gonna give you some details and some, uh, numbers and some websites, but I can tell you that we are, again, working diligently. We're, we're in touch with the state workforce development through the Governor's Office. Any changes coming down, anything we can do to enhance services, we're trying to do. Many of our services are available online, and I'll go through some of that. And at this time, we are maintaining our staffing at all of our offices, so that they will be available to answer questions, work with the customers through email, phone, whatever method we can outside of public contact. Let me give you, first of all, there's a major concern, obviously, with unemployment at this point. To apply for unemployment benefits online, it is at unemployment.ohio.gov. Everything for unemployment, even when we're operating, is done online. There's also a phone number for unemployment claimants. That number is 1-877-644-6562. So even when we're operating, our staff can only give them basic advice on unemployment as far as applying. We do not get into personal claims, benefit amounts, things of that nature. So for the general public, what we're doing right now, I mentioned that our staff is intact. So our staff is available to answer phone calls, emails. We can help those filing unemployment through the application process. We can get them to the process so that they can fulfill that requirement. We can provide direction to claimants when completing their requirements for unemployment. Now, I know the state has eased some of those requirements for unemployment. For unemployment compensation under normal times, you have to be seeking work and be active for work. They've eased some of those requirements in this crisis. We can provide job search assistance. One of the things we do is offer resumes. We offer interviewing. They're all the basic things you need in order to be successful in your job search. That's still available. We could direct, uh, there's trainings on what's called ohiomeansjobs.com. That's a website that's out there. It's a state website. And on there, there's a lot of information, and all of our, all of our customers are registered on that, and people can register on ohiomeansjobs.com to find out what schools are out there. They can find out job search. They can do job search. There's a lot of things. There's interviewing, there's career search, resume writing. There's a myriad of, of information out there. Now, our Ohio Means Jobs Center, which is in Boardman, uh, the number there for people to call if they need assistance is 330-967-1787, extension zero. When they call in, we will have staff available to navigate them through the process. We also are developing a system for our eligibility determination. This is where people can come in and receive training assistance for going to school through federal funding. We have to develop that, and we're working on that as we speak. How do we develop that requirement of eligibility without social contact? There's things we can do over the phone, but we also have personal identif, identify information that we have to protect. So we're working to do that to maintain as many services in our eligibility side as we possibly can at this time. We will continue to work with our individual services, those that are enrolled. Our case management continues by phone, by, by email. We have our case managers that work with individuals. We'll continue that. We're gonna stay in contact. We will recommend workshops on ohiomeansjobs.com if they need to have workshops. Obviously, we're not conducting those on-site now because of the public contact, but they, they can access those through ohiomeansjobs.com. We're setting up aptitude testing via CareerScope. These are things that we're These are things that we're required to do under federal eligibility laws with the workforce development system. We can still do that over the phone. We can still do that remotely. We're going to instruct people how to search on ohiomeansjobs.com, job leads, what, what's available out there so we can direct people. We want to instruct people to do self-assessments. Uh, these are, these are workshops that we conduct that show you your profile, what you're looking at, where you want to go, what type of career search you want to do. We'll continue to provide supportive services to customers that are enrolled in training. We have a lot of individuals that are enrolled in training at a lot of our public institutions, uh, from our Career and Tech Centers to, to YSU, Kent State. We're all over the board. So we will continue to sup, provide support services to them. We provide uniforms, work boots, whatever they need, and we'll continue to pay for those as we, as we move forward. From our business service side, we're not going to be conducting any recruitments for business services, obviously, but we will do staff-assisted job postings as we do now. We'll conduct resume searches for candidates for businesses that are looking to hire. Uh, we'll do job description development as we've done in the past, and we'll help them with labor market information. So, again, this is a very difficult time. We work every day diligently to try to maintain as many services as possible, but obviously you're, 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 you're between the health issue and services provided. It's a very trying time for everybody, but I think we have a good plan right now, and we'll continue to hone that plan. But I think Commissioners, as things change, we'll need to change as we move forward. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Bert, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Uh, the state, have, they have waived the three-week to one-week...
They have waived the waiting week.
The waiting period.
Yeah, there's normally a waiting period for unemployment compensation, and they've waived that. Uh, under House Bill Two, uh, that was passed some time ago, uh, when someone applies for unemployment compensation, they had to go through some process, come to our OMJ One-Stop Centers in order to prove they're looking for work and available for work. I believe they're waiving some of those at this time. Uh, I, I don't have the figures in front of me, but I just got something, I think it was this morning, from, uh, the state. Their claims for unemployment in one week went from six, 600-something to about 11,000. Now, this is all being handled, all the online is being handled through the phone system, uh, through the state, and they have also increased the amount of people that are manning the phone lines. Um, so I would say that there's going to be some wait times out there for people filing unemployment. Um, but again, I think as we work through this process, we'll continue to work with the state and anything we can do locally from the Governor's side, from his edicts, and, uh, as we move forward, we will, we will implement. I'm also, I'm also understanding that the state is looking at some waivers out there. There are some things we have, that we are mandated to do under federal legislation, under the workforce legislation, but I understand that because of this crisis, they are looking to waive some of those, which can streamline some of our services so that we can, we can provide services more fluidly without bureaucracy and be able to provide them quicker if we can. So we are monitoring this every day. Uh, we maintain contact with the, uh, state OD JFS Director, Kimberly Hall. We just on a conference call with her this morning. So, uh, we're doing everything we can at this point.
For your, um, training programs, a lot of the, the universities, they're doing distance learning. For those who, uh, don't have the capability to have a computer or do that, will they be able to re-enroll in that training afterwards or will they...
Yeah, that, that's an issue that we're dealing with right now. I mean, obviously, we, we rely, we have satellite locations at all our public libraries, uh, so that gives access in both Mahoning and Columbiana Counties. But now, as you know, the libraries have closed, and I would expect more entities to close. What we're doing with those that are already enrolled at Youngstown State, uh, or any of the entities that have curtailed operations, we're going to work with them to see what we can do to help with that. There's not a lot we can do at this time if you don't have access. But we're going to look at our current enrollments to find out where we can maneuver some people to main, so that they don't lose what they gain, what they've started. And then anybody new coming in, obviously, we'll make sure that there's access. I don't, I don't anticipate a lot of people coming in at this point for training, given the situation. However, we will be prepared for it if there is. Any other questions?
Thanks, Bert.
Thank you.
Prosecutor Gaines, would you like to, uh, say anything?
No, I think everybody's covered it, um, so...
I want to reiterate, uh, at this point in time, there are no cases in Mahoning County. This is subject to change. This is an ever-evolving, uh, pandemic and situation that we are dealing with. This is not like a natural disaster where we have a defined area or defined jurisdictional boundaries. This is impacting all of us, not just in the Mahoning Valley, but the state of Ohio and the country as a whole. So I just want to remind everybody, please take precautions. So, uh, please, if you have any county business, please call ahead, check the county website, mahoningcountyoh.gov, call ahead to the respective departments. If you do need to come in, uh, please exercise cautions, uh, proximity six feet away from each other. There is hand sanitizer available at departments, at, at counters, uh, wherever available, please utilize this. Uh, and then also from a public safety standpoint, uh, just please, uh, exercise caution, follow the recommendations of the Ohio Department of Health on their website, and that is coronavirus.ohio.gov. Uh, the recommendations are there. They are updated, uh, continuously as this ever evolves, uh, and our first responders are dealing with this as well. So, uh, just be cognizant of the fact of not inundating our first responders, inundating the hospital. So if you, uh, don't need to go to the hospital, don't just go to the hospital just because, because that, uh, causes a lag and overwhelms, uh, our medical field as a whole. So just, uh, please exercise caution is what I encourage.
The state, um, said yesterday, Dr. Acton, Acton, about, um, there's a shortage of the PPEs, and they suggested that any veterinarians, dentists, or others can donate and they could drop off at the EMAs. Is that something that you've prepared for? Have you received those, or how would they go about that?
I would encourage, if anybody has any, to contact me. Uh, please call my office, 330-740-2200. Please do not just show up and drop off. Uh, I have limited staff in my building as it is, and I don't necessarily have the capabilities to take, store, and distribute this informa, this, uh, equipment. But if there is supplies available, because there is a shortage of it, um, I am on regular conference calls with Ohio Emergency Management and in regular communications with Mahoning County Public Health, and what we're concerned about is a shortage of PPE, which is personal protective equipment with masks, gowns, gloves, et cetera. And some of these, the general public has gone out and purchased, and this is not designed for the general public. This is designed for our first responders if they need it. So wearing a mask out in public is not necessarily beneficial to the general public because if it's not properly fitted. For example, I have a beard. A mask would not seal to me so that it would not prevent anything, but this virus, uh, can attack the, you can get it, uh, contracted through the eyes, the nose, the mouth. So if you're just wearing a mask, your eyes are not protected. So that is the, uh, please don't, uh, just go out and take that away because if somebody's buying that from the general public, it's taking away from, uh, potentially first responders procuring this equipment, needing it for the first responders and the medical side. So we have to, this is twofold. So, uh, 911 is getting inundated with calls, so, uh, fire departments and ambulance companies are, are responding to calls. They may have to alter and conserve some of their PPE where possible, um, so that we have it available to us. Because the burn rate is, uh, when I say burn rate is how fast are they utilizing this PPE amongst their respective agencies.
Is there any change in first responders and calls that they, that they, uh, like fire departments may allow or, or ambulances? Is there any change in that, say with overdoses or any, any...
I can't speak for every specific department, so I can give you a general overview, uh, not speaking for anybody in particular, but they have altered some of their, uh, their, their call-taking. So they're doing a lot more, if you call 911, there's a lot more information gathering going on to provide to the first responders before they respond. And, uh, there are cases where there are just true accidents still out there where they are responding. That is their job. They respond. So, uh, if you call, they will come, but just be mindful if, if you don't need to call 911, it's, it's, don't inundate the system. Any other questions?
Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate it. Um, the one other thing I wanted to mention as well is, is if you have any needs whatsoever, you know, please call the county. You know, if we can direct you, uh, to where we can offer assistance or help in any way, you know, we will, we will definitely do that. We need to all follow the President and Governor's recommendations. Um, we're also, uh, we've hired, uh, separate companies to go around and to disinfect all of the sites in which we're, you know, operating still, the counters, the windows, JFS, the courthouse, uh, all the buildings are being sprayed. Uh, we've got companies coming in and doing that independently, um, so we're trying to assist in any way. We're also working with Second Harvest Food Bank to try and provide assistance that's needed for people that are, uh, that have been displaced from their jobs or livelihood and may need assistance that they don't qualify for, you know, under normal conditions. So, uh, there's nothing that you shouldn't call us about that we can at least try or offer assistance in some way, shape, or form. Any other questions?
Are you working with 211?
Um, you know, that's still, that's still available. Audrey, can you, uh, add Dennis in?
Yes, 211 is still open and operational. Uh, they are, are a, 211 is a, a help hotline network, so they are available, and they cover multiple counties, not just Mahoning County. So if there are any questions, uh, please feel free to co, contact 211. They will be updated, uh, with the information of county closers as well as, uh, any other. So the, the guidance is ever-changing, so please be mindful. Uh, this changes sometimes by, we, for an hour from now, things can be completely different, but, uh, as of right now, yes, they are still operating.
And there's all hard, hard copy to this. There's with Dennis...
...of risk management, and something's been brought to my attention this morning by other, uh, county associates. Uh, it appears that, uh, phishing and scamming is already taking place, uh, with the, with the issue of, uh, county staff being staggered or possibly public counters being closed. Uh, it appears that phishing emails are already being sent out, and telephone calls are already being made to, uh, people that are seeking services from county government. Um, emails are being sent out stating that, uh, I personally, uh, was ill and not able to do my job, uh, and I'm on a board, so, uh, uh, there, there, that person was assisting and gathering fees and, and accepting payments on my behalf. Uh, what they're doing is they're going online and getting our public information off of county and, uh, associate websites, and they're using that information, uh, to, uh, trick you into paying them. So please be aware that, uh, Mahoning County, uh, does not accept, uh, does not send out emails requesting money. They do not call you on the telephone and take, uh, payment information over the phone. Please verify that unless it's a, an organization or a, a payment, uh, method that you're used to using, that if it's not on our website and it's not on the state's website, please take care in issuing any payment. If you have any questions, please contact the related, uh, county or state government services, but please be aware, again, we do not, uh, email you or, uh, call you to solicit payments in any way. Thank you.
You have to say, Patty, you have, have a little, have to check your health and your assistance.
Good job.
Good job.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.